Yes, we're talking about potentially an upgrade to our rural facility. Also to update you in regard to the plumbing aspect, I am still awaiting a quote from AcuDag in regard to the lateral lines that we discussed at the last meeting. And that quote is for both prevent the scope and then also for the overall repair. I have had minor discussion with them, obviously, but these lines are smaller lines. And so the lines themselves, what I understand or am following would actually have to be dug up and replaced. These are lines that cannot have that liner fixed to them as we just did. So with that in mind, obviously, you'd probably have to move inmates. And then also we have to address a potential happen to move dispatch temporarily. But I may be speaking ahead again. My main thing is I'm waiting, still waiting on a quote. I'm being told they could potentially reach a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars for that work.
I had a discussion with Chris Mullins, owns a new place outside Camden, at the back center. He said he can do it for about half of us. I might want to get with him, if he can handle it now.
Who's your guy?
Who's your guy? Yes. So he said he can probably, he's a little very face accident here, he says he can help the community.
Was that replacement of lines?
Yeah, he says he knows another company in Ohio that can actually pull online, even though it's a new technology. He was complaining to me and I'm like, okay, you're where my head. So you might want to get ahold of him and have him come in.
So anyway, my main purpose this morning was to present the deal and some of the issues that we continue to have in our current facility. And we've never had the opportunity, you know, since we had no one in the building, it was a great opportunity for Bill Staff and I to go back and explore these photographs.
Now let's take for example Sheriff, this cover photo here.
Yes.
Do the inmates have access to this spot?
That particular spot, no. That is actually in the, if you will, catwalk area, that small area behind the cell, actual cell. So yeah, no, they would not have access there.
If I remember right, that's a shower drain that comes from the floor down and comes up still open. They move, they do the same. That one there that can't get into, they're still, they're pretty far. Find you one here. This here is the back of the shower drain. Those valves that are in that, you can't find them no more. I took two months to find your valve. This here, they can get access behind there because the fountain, the water fountain on the back and the toilet itself, you'd almost take your hand in that. You can put coffee on it with your cup, then it's still pulled out. Just here along the shower wall, just out the front of the shower. Yeah, see there, there's a big one on that. And that's a huge. Because blame it or not, the inmates will tear up their blankets and they can make assault out of blankets. And they can loot around here somehow, I don't really do it, I haven't figured it out, but they can set your comm and everything else. They can just keep working it and working it.
I guess I should stress that at least what I have observed at this point, there is no, none of this lends to the potential for an escape situation. But again, it falls back on safety and security potentially. I guess I'll say the word potentially being able to ambush staff if they're not seeing this coming. Believe me, I have a good consideration that I have that kind of knowledge. So anyway, that's all I have. Unless you have any questions, I just wanted to present physical photographs to you this morning. And hopefully this can continue to fuel our efforts to give our talks that we can just have.
It certainly supports the concept that we need to do something.
Thank you.
Mr. Homer, Homer Mullins over here. Then we are down gentlemen to the PETA BOA Board. For those new audiences, this is the board that you appeal your property tax to. If you have a problem with your property tax, you can appeal to it. And according to the state where we have certain requirements of they have to have certain educational levels on assessing property before they can serve on this board. And so it's not just likely to name Bill Brown to be on this board. I couldn't do it because I don't have that training. A letter from Dana, I don't care. Yeah, I read this one, yeah. She is supporting these three ladies that we have here to be on the, on the board. They're Level Two Certified Indiana Assessment Appraisers, which is required by law, as she says. So gentlemen, how do you want to handle this? You want to make this appointment or? I guess we're, well, we're looking at it as either yes or no right now. If it's no, we got to find somebody else, and I don't want to do it.
I think the people have been on there for a while in return, and put it out the first call, go ahead and make the motion. And Jane Smith, Doris McLean, and Phyllis Holyer, etc., are going to be appointed to the PETA BOA Board.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second for PETA BOA, PETA BOA, the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Appointments Jane Smith, Doris McLean, and Phyllis Holyer. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed. We have 911 Advisory Appointment.
I would like to add one warning to that, Erica Draper that filed, that she had.
That's the letter we got in here, didn't we?
I might have sent an email in there. She sent it after the agenda was done.
The students all on that board. Mike, are you on that board?
I'm on that board. But Erica Draper is a part-time dispatcher. So they can be on the board.
Can an employee be part of this board of the county?
What board is that?
911 Boards?
Yes.
If they are a dispatcher.
If they are a dispatcher?
Part-time dispatcher.
I don't see legal objection.
I didn't, I don't know.
Right, that, that was my question because we have another one. Mr. Ken Kingery, he's a deputy, I didn't know if that was allowed or not.
Do they, do they approve claims in any way of the suspension system? And go for actual control? No, I don't see any problem with that. I mean, you may not want to have somebody, I don't know. But there's no legal reason, does not just fall by.
All right, thanks for making sure.
Okay, so Beth, do we have names to add to this, three of this?
This is Erica Draper.
We have three appointments, but four. We have one, one.
Well, I think we have Mr. Kingery here. And Shawna Yoder here?
Yes.
And there's Cheryl Calvert, since she could make it, right?
Actually, she has a, is not currently on there.
I would like to listen to the team that are here.
Well, let's do it.
You should have emails on every one.
I do. I got three here. Well, first one on top, Spencer, can you come up, please?
Cheryl explains her.
Right. And Cheryl, she explains hers.
Hello, my name's Mr. Kingery. I'm actually currently employed at the Sheriff's Department of K-9 Deputy. I've been there since 2010. I also worked for Delphi City Dispatch from 2006 for a couple of months before taking a full-time position at the jail. 2006 to 2008. Was laid off in 2008 and came back full-time in 2010 again. In 2009, I was also a reserve deputy for the Sheriff's Department, volunteered my time as a reserve deputy. And then at Boyd, I was also a corrections officer at Tidewell County Jail from 2008 to 2010 as well. I currently am on the city council for Delphi and I act as president right now for the city council. Some of my other jobs that I do is I'm also a deputy marshal of Burlington Police Department. And I'm also a part-time patrol officer with D for Police Department. So my educational aspects, I graduated out of Central Criminal Justice Degree in 2009. And I also graduated from Delphi Community High School in 2005. I reside in Delphi. Pretty much only need to know probably work wise, I work everywhere. But I've been pretty much a lifelong member of the community and ever since graduating high school, then in public safety and law aspect of it.
What was your reasoning to put your name there?
My reasoning to put in my name is I get to work with dispatchers, I get to see what's going on. I get to hear a lot of the complaints, just informal complaints, you know, just from the talk. Also get to hear the complaints from either, you know, firemen, EMS, other fellow deputies, officers. We get to hear what's going on, you know, what, how can we improve, how can we, you know, what's going to be needed to progress 911s that are in progress, training, what can be done, something different if needed. Just I think they want a voice from basically line, line level, you know.
Hello, Ms. Yoder.
I am Shawna Yoder and I was born and raised in Carroll County. My family's been here for years. I'm currently a supervisor for the Department of Child Services here in Carroll County. I've been with the department for six years. I was a previous dispatcher for the Delphi City Police when they have their own dispatch for the Carroll County Sheriff's Department. I was also a jail officer there for about five years. This has been about 20 years ago. So I graduated from Indiana Wesleyan, I have a degree in business administration. And the reason that I would like to be appointed to the board is being a previous dispatcher and someone that worked at the jail, I know the importance of having good equipment and good leadership and how important that is. And then in my position with being, with DCS, we have a lot of requests and stuff for law enforcement to assist us because we only go to a house with a clipboard and a pen and sometimes we need that assistance of law enforcement. So I would bring that perspective from not a criminal point, but with a community point, point of view on, you know, what the needs are for different agencies if they would need the assistance.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this is from Cheryl Calvert. She'd like to submit my name for consideration for filling the 911 board seat. I started dispatching at Delphi City in 78, before 911. I have dispatched in Carroll County, White County, Tidewell County in 2010. I became 911 Director of White County and held that position for 11 years. As 911 Director, I managed the 911 Center with 15 employees, serving police, fire, and ambulance, 29 agencies, scheduling, payroll, department budget, at that time was $610,000. Hiring and termination of employees, updating 911 manual and training of dispatchers and dispatching 911. Thank you for my, thank you for your time and consideration, Cheryl Calvert. Thanks for giving us this.
So who's the president of the board right now? Is that you, Warren?
No.
Sheriff? So it's you as the sheriff, there's a floor on there, floor two, please.
There.
I can't remember if Paul's on there or if he has a desk.
Bishop. Bishop's had it once.
I think Bishop's on there as the fire, the fire minister. And then Paul's the town. Then we got Burlington on there. And Camden, do they have one?
No.
So what role does this board actually use? What, what is their job?
Mainly to, we meet quarterly and then we review information from the 911 Director in regard to what, if it's taking place with 911. And then as it was done a few years ago, our only role from personnel standpoint, the way I've always understood it, is to accept applications for individuals should we need to fill out vacancies of some sort. And then offer that recommendation to this board as far as that position is concerned. But the quarterly meetings mainly entail an update on that quarterly basis to the 911 Director as it relates to 911 operations. I know Kathy brought up obviously training aspects, that she's had full personnel training, that personnel completed. And various issues relating to mapping, updates on mapping, and just all facets of 911. So it's a general update on a quarterly basis on the 911 operations.
And I think they report to us some issues during the day.
Yeah, and that kind of goes back to what Senator Lee first put.
I was wrong, but I can make the, make the agreement today. So we got four candidates.
Well, gentlemen, how do you want to decide?
Should we send it to the board or the deputy? I think they're all qualified because they all done it in one way or the other. I don't know if again, an employee, does it have that difference in it? I don't think it would because I think they're professionals. But if you have that chance, then we got two outsiders that used to do it. I don't know. I think they're all good. I'll put them on.
We never really had, usually we have a couple of clients on here. I don't think having any employee would bother me any more because I think they would be knowledgeable about what's going on. I, when I served on this board a long time ago, I didn't have enough contact with 911 myself to really don't be much of an asset to the board.
Then you got one in here that used to be the position. I would like to keep it where, because when I worked there, you always had your fire departments complaining because they don't get the time. The deputies complaining because they don't always catch what's going on or you have one that's, you always got one that's better than the other. I'd like to have somebody from the outside of our realm looking in because if not, they're all going to gang up on the line and the business. That's the way I see it.
You're right.
No disrespect to, but that's the way I see it. Because that position sitting there answering that phone and that radio is probably the most stressful job you've ever had in your life. And I can remember those people that did it. I really do. I did it nine and a half years. It's pretty stressful. Because you got one officer here, you got one officer here, and they're both acting at the same time. You only have two people on there setting, our 911 centers, in my opinion, behind the time. With just two people. Sometime you only need one. It just depends on the situation.
Do you have an opinion on this?
I don't think it all qualifies to, for employees where you're, you're finding one outside. Actually, it's hard to say, but I've got, you can mention that a lot of people that are capable of doing it for the service. I don't, I don't have probably any candidates.
Yeah, I don't either. I've never had the same candidates to. You only get one that should have lived.
The way I see our position right now is we can select one and that'll be it. Or we can, we can strike ones we didn't want, but I don't see that happening. Or we could do more investigation on our own and come back with an opinion at the next meeting. Whatever you want to do.
I like to go to the next meeting.
You will?
I like that kind of thing. I want to talk to them. Try to talk to them.
Okay, so when's our next quarterly meeting?
May.
First Thursday.
Does that do it on the fifth? Is it better next week?
May.
May fifth, I'm sorry. I'm trying to miss the whole April. So we'll have a decision on, I'll make a motion, we'll make a decision on April. I'm sorry. I'm trying to excuse, I got, for April.
We can sit with last second. Okay, just a second. So I got a motion and a second that we will make the final decision on April fifth. All in favor, please say aye.
Ms. Yoder, we have my phone number.
I know, please.
Okay, we're getting that places part, do we? Spencer, you know how to get ahold of it? You know, can we get a sheriff number here?
If you would like to give me a call, that'd be fine. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming forward and standing up here. We never had it before. EDC appointment. The Economic Development Corporation came forward with a person that they felt would be very good to have on the board. He seemed a fine person to me. The only question I have about it is he's president of the zoning board and he's on this and he's on that. It seemed like he was the same guy we're going to be worn out here for too long. Being a meeting man going everywhere all the time. I have, I have somebody that I would like to put on there and just the one that, I don't know, we got an email on. I'm just going to be, I think I'm going to look at things. Ready to hear your discussions on it.
I'm happy with Wade. I wasn't a big supporter of EDC. I'll tell you publicly, I wasn't a bigger, big supporter, but I'm really happy with Jake. He's making progress, he seems like it. And he's been here more in the five years I've been up here or even on council, getting information from the young man. I'm kind of excited with this EDC. I like his appointment. Was it the same email I got?
Dale Stewart.
Dale Stewart? He wants to be on there.
Yeah, he would like to be on there. He's a former Delphi Councilman and ran for mayor and ran for county council right after that, ended with a total loss of being a county councilman. I know when Dale was city councilman, he was disappointed, let's say, with, as you were Steve, with the way economic development was going. And contacted me several times about different ideas that he had that he would like to see come forward. He was always very forward thinking about progress in Carroll County and ways we could improve it. And he was always coming to me with ideas on housing. And I think that's a big item that we've got now going is housing. Back in the days when I did economic development, which is getting way back to now, the board did not want me to touch housing. That wasn't something that they were interested in at all. So we didn't go after housing developments or anything like that. In fact, I kind of pushed the envelope by going into retail. And, you know, at that time, we were very short of retailers. Everybody in alcohol and a couple of other things here. Big dollar. Things that aren't here anymore.
And this is our appointment, right?
This is our appointment to the board. This is vacated because Josh.
Was the, his term was up?
His term was up and so he, he got appointed by Billings. But he's still on the board. But we have a movement. And we will have one, we will have an appointment every year. It's a three-year rotating. Those are the two that we've had come forward. I'll just, I'll make a motion myself that we put Dale Stewart on the board.
Well, I'm probably, two, the one thing I was concerned about, the far, was the involvement of their plan. Well, has their set of eyes, probably has a little more time to develop some ideas and some research. So, you know, I could deal with that, I think.
Are you okay with this?
I'm, I'm good either way, but I think they're both good. I just want to make sure we got a good working relationship and.
I don't want to do anything that's going to.
Right.
And.
And the thing is, is our last guy said that he would report to us on what's happening, which they'll need to, he's here most of the time. But our representative never came in and gave us a report when he said he wanted to. That's my concern. They never came in after the meeting and said, hey, this is what happened. So I'm, I'm happy.
We did kind of, we never got something, Josh could never get it before for him. We did get from Marion Woberson, she's in one of our other appointments. And she, she frequently was in here for different things and I think it's outstanding. So anyway, we've got a motion and a second for Dale Stewart, and so I'll call for a vote. All voters in favor of that, unless, did you just start to say something?
Nope. No, good.
Call for a vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Do we have any other visits before the board? Yes, sir. Your patience sitting there.
There's nothing really to do, but I'm a dumber man. I look through the page of numbers. I see the Carroll Manor numbers being going down as far as the finances. Where are we at on that? You know, I don't want to get down the end and say, well, we're at the point where we have no money again, just want to close the thing. We have a way of knowing or way of what happened last year, remember, about sixty thousand compared to the year before? Code. We can allow anybody in or out. So you think that we're on the, still on the right track to keep this great situation going?
I know that's the problem that we have is it.
Yeah, we just now took one new resident.
Yeah, we, we just now took one new resident, two new residents in the last month and a half, maybe. And before they, I would think he was letting them in because of, because they have done wonderful out there, keeping them out.
Well, that's what I want to hear. I just want to know, if I look at numbers, they just, question comes to my mind, are we going to run out of money in three more years from now? And the thing is, on the financial end, as I say, from a point of view, I see all this money flowing through the county. We ought to have fourteen million dollars of a bank to pay for this jail. We've done something wrong. As citizens of the county, to see that we don't have the money to pay for this jail.
The county is unprepared for it.
Yeah, that's what I mean. We should have money set aside every year for that.
When I sat on council, tried to get money put in for a new jail, my last two years, sitting on council, because I don't know whatever actually came out of that. I don't know if there's ever any money put back on that or not.
So you seem like we spent everything we have. If we get elected, we find a place to put it, and it should have been earmarked for jail, you know? When I, when I have, I built a house and building, I know I need extra number of dollars every year with eighty apartments I have. I got a maintenance issue, and I got a replacement issue that happens every year, and if I don't put it back for that, we're done. And it's not, it's not fair what the county, what happened. This is not commiserated. We should have, people like me should have been pushing everybody saying, oh, look, big numbers here. Looks like to me, we're not putting anything away for you.
I'm not, I'm not blaming the current council. We're doing way back. We're at this point now.
Yeah.
You know, we're, it's, we're repairing, we're building, so we could have been beyond this, if something would have been started a few years ago.
So what's going to happen now if we're paying for jail, also if we're coming back for the next one, so it's a double whammy, because my point of view is, I'm not going to let it happen again to my grandchildren, like people like that. Not necessary. There should have been forethought planning by everybody, including the taxpayer.
A couple of months ago, I had the opportunity to talk to Gordon McCain, who was a longtime council president. And I asked him, I said, is it true, I've heard this a lot of times, Gordon, this is before my time, but that when that jail, the existing jail was built, did you have the money to pay for it? Was it paid for, what, this, what I've always heard is it was paid for the day it opened. And I asked Gordon that, and he said, that's true. We put that money back, and so was it, the day that jail opened, it was paid for.
You see, there were only about five hundred thousand a year or something like that, we could put back or something like that, four hundred thousand a year.
It helped a lot, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any coming for us?
I do have some, a couple of things. Nine-one-one backup center, she was supposed to be here today.
She's ill, isn't she?
She's ill, so she's not here, so I told her to worry about it at a later date. And I've been approached again by a couple of people in the town of Camden about Sam's garage again, or the old corner garage, want to know where it happened. What's going on with it? Last time I knew, we sent it to council, is that right, Deb? Or Beth to get it approved to sell it? Is that how that works? I don't.
No, no one ever approached council.
To sell the building?
They'd want to be back there to the council?
I don't know. I, I don't, I, I can't go.
To sell the building?
If we want to sell, we have, we have an old garage building in Camden that has turned the morgue. At one time it was an ambulance garage, when we had volunteer ambulance service. And if we wanted to, it's not, if we want to sell that building, what is our, what, how do you?
What's the assessed value?
Twenty-two thousand.
I've had to look it up. There is a different, there is a different statute, beginning on the amount. And they relaxed the rules for appraisals, so.
So you can have that by next meeting?
Oh, I can, I can look it up right now, if you want, right.
I'm getting ready to end the meeting, so.
Okay. I mean, I, I.
They waited this long, the people can wait a little bit longer.
We're gonna be around with this for, what, three, four years now?
So you want me to put it on the agenda for April with that?
Please, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. You need to get it appraised, or, or it'll be one appraiser and a, and an employee, which is usually the assessor.
Whoever invited you, that's been a lot of work in the county, because I think you've been vetted into this.
Twenty-two thousand, if he says.
That's the last people we're passing.
Where is it?
Camden. What street is it?
Ohio.
Ohio Street. I was gonna say Ohio.
One fifteen.
One fifteen, Ohio Street. That's the one thing that is.
So I'm about to back up now. You want that on any people there?
Yeah, if she's capable of what she wants. Because if we have to move dispatch out, we've got no place to go right now. Nowhere. We'd have to count on another county to do our dispatch.
Anything else coming to the board?
Most of the year, I'm tired.
All in favor of saying aye? Thank you all. We are here. Susan ran out of room last week.